And welcome to. Hold on, we're gonna fix that audio issue. We'll test that again. How about that? I was both the problem and the solution there. Apologies for that. Okay. Welcome, everybody, to the District of Squamish Committee, the whole for Tuesday, February 23rd, 2021. My name is Councilor Armin Herford, and as the acting mayor this month, I'll be chairing this meeting. As always, welcome to Squamish Nation, traditional territory. Could I have adoption of the agenda? Moved by Councilor Stoner, second by Mayor Elliott. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up is ministerial order M192. That pursuant to ministerial order number M192, the District of Squamish is excluding in-person attendance at this February 23rd, 2021 meeting on the basis that full public attendance in a manner consistent with public health orders and recommendations cannot be accommodated at this time. And the district is ensuring openness, transparency, accessibility, and accountability at this meeting by the following means. This meeting is being live streamed, and a video of this meeting will be available on the district's website for viewing on an on-demand basis. Someone move that, please. Moved by Councilor Race. Second by Councilor Peddingell. Any opposed? Motion carries. And I have a quick piece about electronic participation. Give me a second here. So, council, we have a quick spiel about our electronic participation, which we're all getting fairly good at at this point, but it's always worth a reminder. So council members attending the meeting electronically are required to advise the Chair of the meeting of the following circumstances. When a council member disconnects and/or reconnects, which means entering or exiting the meeting. So this can be recorded in the minutes of the meeting. Council members are to identify themselves when they advise that they wish to be placed on the speakers list. With respect to a vote, council members are only required to state a nay vote. No statement is required if the member is in favor. Council members shall put their telephone or computer on mute unless they wish to speak. Council members shall be involved in and participate in the meeting. Council members shall text the chief administrative officer or the corporate officer if they have technical difficulty with their telephone or computer. If the meeting shall be recessed for up to 10 minutes if a technical difficulty occurs on the district side, which results in the council member being unable to connect to the meeting. Okay, moving on to the first order of business. Just staff reports, and we have Keely Kidner joining us for a presentation on Actioning the UN Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous Peoples and Inclusiveness, Diversity, Equity, and Access. So over to you. And Keely, if you've begun speaking, we can't hear you, so we'll just make sure that we have the right audio line for you.
There we go. Thanks. I'm also tuning in on my phone, so there's a lot of unmutes to press.
That's okay.
All right.
Let's go now.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and for those who are tuning in, good morning. And I'm Keely Kidner, Research and Project Coordinator, and I'll be presenting this morning about the UN Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous Peoples, as well as inclusion, diversity, equity, and access. So this morning, we're going to be speaking about a bit of background on this project, some of the outcomes of the Actioning Undrip project, and I'll talk a little bit about a project known as IDEA. We'll discuss budget and some next steps, and I think we'll have lots of time for questions and discussion afterwards. So before we begin, I'd just like to say a few words in acknowledgement of the land. I know that we acknowledge the land before every council meeting. And most of us are meeting on the unceded traditional territory of the Squamish of Meo, the Squamish people. Although some of you and us may be joining in from other unceded territories. And I also wanted to acknowledge that our logo, the Squamish logo, represents the Salish Eye, which is the Eye of the Creator. And this logo was developed with a member of Squamish Nation on the committee. And in using it, I want to acknowledge that we have a connection and responsibilities to the Squamish people. And as we begin our discussion of truth and reconciliation, I want to center these acknowledgements a little bit further. So as Michelle Tatalia Nahini of Squamish Nation stated in one of our workshops, she was speaking about our logo. She said, "These lines are lines that have been drawn for thousands of years." Now, many of you are familiar with the Truth and Reconciliation Commission of Canada's report, which outlines 94 calls to action, one of which is the adoption and implementation of the UN Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous Peoples. In this presentation, I'll be referring to the UN Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous Peoples as the Declaration, or sometimes Undrip in its acronym form, where I'm referring to the Actioning Undrip project, which we'll be talking about a little bit more. So what is the United Nations Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous Peoples? The Declaration is a non-binding, comprehensive statement that outlines human rights for indigenous peoples everywhere. It sets minimum standards and outlines norms and principles to guide state interactions. As you can see, since 2016, the district has been engaging with these concepts by offering employee workshops to help understand the impact of colonization, including residential schooling, as well as increased cultural competency amongst staff. In 2018, District of Squamish Council endorsed the UN Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous Peoples, and the following year began meeting with Squamish Nation Council in a nation-to-nation capacity. In the last two years, the district's halls will be done preparatory workshops for engaging with both the Declaration and the Truth and Reconciliation initiatives through work with local indigenous consultants. And I will note that other municipalities are beginning the path of implementing the Declaration, as well as Truth and Reconciliation Calls to Action. And this includes the City of Montreal, and of course, the City of Vancouver. And just this week, the City of Edmonton announced their strategy. All right, I want to talk a little bit about the Actioning Undrip workshop. And this was a workshop that was organized by Michelle Tatalia Nahini, along with Paisley Tatalia Nahini from Squamish Nation.
Systemically in our thinking, in our approach.
Thank you. Really, Mr. Box, into that.
I have no further to add to to Mayor Elliott. She was right on mark with that.
Thank you. Counselor Rice, any any other comments this time? Thank you. Counselor Stone.
Thank you through the chair. I'm just curious about the proposed composition of the committee. One, I recognize that there's a lot of internal work to do, and it seems like that's going to be our focus for 2021. In the council resolution from July of last year, there's also a fair bit of discussion around ensuring that our committees and our advisory bodies are reflective of our community as a whole. And so I'm just curious about any thoughts around how we start to align both of our internal work as well as how we engage our community in our external work? Is there a way to do that simultaneously?
Through the chair, yeah, this is a really good question, and I recognize that at this point we're looking internally at how how the district operates. And I feel like the the exercise of analyzing and interrogating how committees are formed internally can inform how we how we look externally. I definitely see this as something that the the idea team can begin to think about. And we are possibly, as part of this work, looking at reviewing policies with that lens. And so this is something we can definitely consider recognizing that it's in the in the council resolution.
Just a follow up on that. I don't have a sentiment one way or another, but have we thought about whether there would be council representation on this committee or is this exclusively a staff committee?
Go ahead, Ms. Linder.
At this point, this is exclusively exclusively as a staff committee.
Okay, are you good for now, Counselor Stone? Okay, Mary, go ahead.
So my question follows Counselor Stoner's, which is then how do we connect the work that we are doing at a political level on actioning the principles with the work that staff is doing? Because the opportunity for disconnection or lack of knowledge exists in that separation.
Through the chair, that's a really great point, and I think it was something we could we would consider going forward. And I know that there is there might be opportunities to bring this work directly to council.
Ms. Linder, did you have a?
Yeah, I could add to that as well. Through the chair, you know, one of the terms that we learned in our workshop, which we are glomming onto from Ms. Colm Myers is the idea of incrementalism. And biting off what we can ultimately chew and deliver on. And so our first step is primarily internally with the staff committee, obviously with the idea of council integrated in there, and then what that looks like will form part of our scoping of the broader project in terms of supporting council.
Yeah, Mary.
So I guess my follow up to that is how does council further its conversations around idea? Where is our opportunity to do that? With our knowledge and understanding of what staff are learning and to inform our own decision making. So so I can see that staff will have a support network. But how are we connecting us as decision makers into that on an ongoing way? And so if we're not thinking about that from the beginning, I'm 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 just trying to figure out that we're this decision making body floating up here. And then there's all of this very good work happening at the staff level. You're kind of relegating us to participating in workshops.
Go ahead, Ms. Linder.
If I might, I think the important thing to remember here is that we are just launching this committee. So respectfully, you know, we are not relegating council to to workshops. As Ms. Kidner has said, we already have been working on vetting policy and bylaw. We have been putting a nature that's doing that for us. We are very much alive to the idea that that council as well wants to be involved. To be perfectly honest, what that looks like, we don't know. And that is something that the committee can take away and work on. So the committee is doing the groundwork, setting up the cross departmental effectiveness of it essentially. And then part of that work will be, how do we involve council? I don't think at this point, my recommendation would be to involve a council member in that that work where council would want a state of art policy involved. So really, the answer is don't go yet, but pick on it. And absolutely open to council ideas and how council sees themselves involved in that.
So since this is committee the whole, I'd be interested in my colleagues' thoughts on how we are involved in this work so that we're informing it from the beginning.
Thank you. Counselor Pedigee, go. And then I'll put myself in there.
Yeah, thank you. And thank you, Kili. I sort of missed a Thanksgiving address at the start of this, but I really appreciate the the report. I it jumped out at me to the sort of absence of a reference to council in this. And, you know, I don't know that we belong in the committee or on the committee. But I do think that as the sort of leadership level, there needs to be some place where we are learning, even if it's just a learning piece. And I don't know that's maybe, I'm not sure if that's up to council to decide how we want to do that. And and so I see that possibly is quite separate from what this committee is doing. But I feel like that is a gap, and that's not something that council should sort of catch up on later. Sort of sooner in the process, we need to be developing our own, at least, understanding, I think.
Thank you. I would agree that that the council, not even input or oversight is what I'm thinking, was that that ongoing learning and every time that I've dug into this topic, I've learned so much. It's impacted my my opinions, my decision making as I go, as I go about the work that what I do as a counselor. So I see, I want to make sure that we keep that, we keep that connection. So whether that's something that we, you know, yeah, I don't know where that I don't know where that is as I as I as I sit here. But definitely there were the next steps should not go where where this committee interacts with council and how and how that goes, whether that's council or members of council meeting with the committee at select meetings early on to set the tone or to learn or or ongoing. I'm not sure what that what that looks like. But I agree with the mayor that it is it is quite important. And I think that the earlier that council, mayor council get the are brought into the into the loop, the earlier the impact will start being being felt as much as there's systemic things that need to happen and and many from the on the staff level. I think that as mayor council identify opportunities as they go about their work, I wouldn't want to lose that those opportunities that could come to surface right away with the more knowledge that we have and the more learning that we do. So, yeah, I don't know what that is. I'll leave that to to staff to to bring that back to us. But my question, actually, there's a question lurking in here somewhere. Oh, yeah, Ms. Linder.
I don't want to enter into the debate, but when I heard you say, Cheryl, wait for staff to bring that back to us. I really appreciate that this is a great opportunity to hear from council on how council does want to be involved. So we are just kicking off the work at staff level. Absolutely recognize that council is a part of our organization and idea and action in the UN Declaration. As the committee goes forward with that in mind, give more ideas on what council expects in terms of involvement or ideas.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you for that. My question is going to be around that as was was as this is in the in the early stages. What is at this point, what is the next touch point for for council? As as you've set out to do this, set up this work? Do we have that yet, or is it?
To be perfectly honest, the next step really is formation of the committee and having our initial meeting and scoping and laying out what what then steps are and what it looks like short term, long term.
Okay, thank you. So with that in mind, that we are in early days, let's let's go there. Mary Elliott.
Well, one of the things that I was thinking of after reading the report and given that this resolution came from council and that we are highly invested in its success is that I believe we should be involved in sort of the terms of reference development to make sure that it's hitting the mark of what we intended from our resolution. I think if we go back to that IAP two framework, you know, the decision makers get to decide what information they need to decide. And so the 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 work of this committee has to be aligned with the information we're going to need going forward to make those big policy decisions. So I think that terms of reference piece and sort of the high level goals or outcome are important for us as a council to consider. And there's lots of staff work that we don't get involved in. But this one has really big cultural and political ramifications. And so I feel differently about this work at the district and our involvement in it. I I'm I'm still really struck by by why this is just a staff committee. Because to have council observers on a committee enables us to hear the challenges that are inherent in the idea project and rolling it out across the district. And then that perspective can be shared with their colleagues at the council table. It's the same way that we have participated in staff advisory committees as observers so that we can not only bring the political lens to some of the discussions, but also be a conduit back to our colleagues on council. And so I'm not sure why it feels important for staff to create that that divide or that it's a different process. Because I see that for me, we need alignment right from the beginning and all the way along. And this doesn't feel like something that, you know, council can can truly embody in our our language and our decision making if at least some of us aren't involved in the context of these discussions right from the beginning. So I don't I don't understand why this is just a staff committee. And and if it needs to be, then 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 honestly, I don't really then understand how I would define council's role yet. I would need more time to think about how we would be involved and yet not involved.
Ms. Linder, yeah?
We're in recess?
Yeah.
Just to speak to my colleagues.
Absolutely. So council will take, we're in recess for for five minutes and we'll return at that makes it ten.
Doesn't make sense to me. So I'm just, I want to, I want to see those terms of reference, see where the gaps are, and then try and create something complimentary to that that keeps council informed and engaged in this conversation at the systemic level.
That makes that makes some sense to me. Ms., I'll just ask the question, I'm not sure who's best suited to to answer this. And and again, acknowledge as early in the conversation, we were talking, it's it's early days and that establishing that terms of reference is is, you know, one of the next steps. What's for the timeline before this before this meeting? And I don't know if that just anything was was that discussion going to happen at the staff level? And I'm trying to understand the context I'm looking for is trying to understand at what point would be appropriate for us to come back to committee the whole for that discussion? Do we wait for us for the committee to do a little bit of work and come back with with the proposed terms of reference? Or do we? Or do we expect to guide or would we like to insert that council feedback earlier in the in the process? I'm just trying to understand timelines so I can reconcile those things. I don't know, whoever is best suited to that, whether that's that's Ms. Kidner or or Ms. Linder.
Depending on the answer in terms of how the terms of reference are created. So if council would like the staff group to draft terms of reference to be brought to the committee the whole workshop with council, then I can't say exactly how long that would take, but I can certainly get that. Yet to even have a meeting. This is all very, very simple. So probably take at least a few weeks, not longer. Or if council prefers to the workshop in terms of reference from scratch, members of the committee in the room, then it can.
You don't want to try to, yeah, Counselor Rice.
Thank you. I think I would prefer to start off with some staff recommendations. And I say that because if you start off in a vacuum, it sometimes is just a little harder to focus. And I think one of the challenges is I've been trying to run this through my head. I think one of the challenges we're going to have with this is focusing on particular actions. And so I think I would try to start that off with a bit of a focus in the staff recommendation or staff recommendations, I think, might be the way to do that. So that would be my preference.
I tend to, I'll chime in as I see no other, no other hands. I also think that that perhaps the terms of reference, the appropriate time for them to come is as a develop from that committee and but before they're before they're adopted. So we so we so it does go through that staff lines as far as where the and give us some good insight into where that committee is is situated at and positioned at this at the at the onset. And, yeah, and I think, and I agree, starting from the from the I wouldn't go so far as to call it a vacuum as we do have, there's lots of, we've done lots of work in this area already. But I do think that having that that committee lens of applied could be could be useful. But I'm, I'd love to hear from the rest of council on this. But yeah, Counselor Stone.
Yeah, thank you through the chair. I'm happy to have the staff committee do a first take of what that terms of reference would look like. I think just reiterating that it doesn't need to be a final draft. It can be a brainstorm of ideas or a general direction. I think bringing that back to council earlier rather than later will be the best way to both for us to understand where those gaps might be and then also help kind of set some some context and direction for that work early. So I'm happy for staff made to to take a lead on it, but bring it back earlier rather than later.
Thank you. Counselor Pedigee?
Yeah, maybe it's splitting hairs a little bit. But I guess as I read through what was proposed and, you know, the budget, we've talked about allocating and so on. So are it, it seems to line up for me with a staff committee. And I would expect it terms of reference sort of focused on that. But I think at the same time, that leaves significant pieces of whole inclusiveness, equity, reconciliation, discussion. So they're not covered by that scope. And so I guess I'm wondering if our ask is to expand what's proposed to include everything in the scope or is it to sort of keep this piece as it is with its its focus scope on the, what I would say, the corporate aspect of it? And then figure out therefore what's left for us and how do we fill in the rest? And it's it's almost a broader, bigger project. And so are we trying to expand the scope of this one? Or as we sort of start here, understand this, get this nailed down and use that as a jumping off point for that discussion about how do we fill in the rest? And maybe that's part of a workshop. And because it does seem to me if we are trying to cover all the things we've been talking about in terms of reconciling equity and so on, it's it's very different than what's been proposed so far here. And and I see that broader discussion again as as a bigger project that I think we need to get moving on, at least in the council education piece of it. And I guess I'm just nervous about delaying what I see as the more corporate action on this, which it seems like we can get rolling on a little bit sooner and quicker. And I would not want to delay that if we can avoid that.
Thank you. Mary Elliott.
Through the chair, I'm not clear on what Counselor Pettengill means by a bigger project. The the staff work was clearly outlined. And then council has introduced the idea of engaging more broadly with the community on getting some input into how we engage or communicate or get more people on our committees that represent more diverse backgrounds. So what is the greater? How are you distinguishing between the work that's been proposed today and some greater project?
That's pretty good. Yeah, go ahead.
Sure that you're, and I apologize, I'm trying to think on my feet a little bit here. I guess my sort of intuitive feeling after reading the report was that it was a little more focused on our corporate actions. And that's critical, I guess, for me, when we start talking about involving or some of the decisions I think we need to make as a council and some of the engagement pieces with the community and other governments and so on. I guess I personally interpreted that as a a bigger scope than what was proposed so far and something that I didn't want to leave off. And maybe that's my misinterpretation, but that's how I've been kind of seeing this so far.
Thank you. I suspect that as staff create their terms of reference, they're going to see that they can't accomplish the systemic change that's required in the the July 20 resolution on their own. But there is a bureaucratic operational perspective that absolutely needs to happen. And there are pieces of this that will require political conversations at the political level and that there are pieces of this conversation that will necessarily require us to reach out to the community to get their input because we don't have all the answers in these four walls. So I think you're right. And I think we can, we can talk about that when the terms of reference come back because I think that's what we're going to discover is this committee can't do everything that's in that resolution. A staff committee, it's just not possible if we're really committed to hearing a diversity of voices and understanding the perspectives of folks in our community. And also, there are some conversations that just have to happen at a government to government level and not at the staff level. So that's my idea is that the terms of reference come back and then we can have a conversation about what's missing to create the systemic change we need. And is there a committee structure of the community that would help to address that?
So I'm raising my hand for my for myself here. But I like this, I like this concept where the staff committee, I think, will be an important part of the of the work. And allowing them to meet and to work on the terms of reference and bring it forward will allow us before it's adopted or actioned on or whatever the term would appropriate term would be for a staff committee. And then we, as a council, we can decide if it's those terms of reference that we would like to adjust or we'd like to take some other actions to complement that that work and amplify its its impact throughout our community. So to me, that seems like a simple first first step to acknowledge is that there's a lot of work and progress that can be done at this at the staff level. But I think all of our interest here today is about amplifying the those staff voices and and having the widest impact that that we can. So I think that gives us opportunity to do that. And so and and I also like it because it's it can also be summed up in quite a simple motion, which is to bring that something along lines of bringing the terms of reference back prior to adoption or or actioning by the by the staff committee for a workshop at committee the whole. And unless I hear otherwise from my council mates, I will make a motion to that effect shortly. So, Counselor Rice?
Yeah, thank you. And and forget my ignorance in this because just going back, I wasn't interviewed by Ms. Nahani, and I wasn't at the meeting, the workshop, and I'm not sure where I was. So I might have missed some of the concepts. But when I read this report and listen to this discussion, it seems to me we're talking about two different things here. One is the idea concept, and that's the July 20 resolution. And the other is actioning under it, which is a cultural internally, seems to me internally a corporate culture and also a very high level political relationship with the Squamish Nation. And I'm sure there's some overlap in there. But what is it exactly we're trying to deal with? Is it one or the other or both? And should we separate them? Is there some way that they do overlap? What exactly are we talking about?
Thank you. I'm not sure who that question is best suited for. That's that's for council or for staff. Do you kind of want to take a swing at that, Ms. Linder?
I can't see Ms. Kidner on the screen, so oh, there she is. I'll take a stab at it. There, Kili, the Indian champion. The idea, I keep using that word, and there's no point in saying it's right, behind this, as as staff, as clearly we've done this, and you're talking about it, the resources, the inclusivity and diversity work as well as the reconciliation work with First Nations, they do intercept. And so at this point, in terms of working past priority, we are moving both forward and recognizing that, yes, they do over that. And as I hear council with this discussion, absolutely the scope of the motion in terms of the inclusivity and diversity reaches way far beyond an operational committee. And there are many layers of this work. So there's the operational work of the diversity and diversity. There's the operational systemic thinking of staff and our reconciliation. And there is the community work with diversity and the political relationship with Squamish Nation and the community relationship with Squamish Nation. And then they all do intersect. How they intersect, what that scope looks like, we're still working that out. But to answer the question, I suppose, in short, is that, yes, we are doing it all, but intermittently. That helps. If there's any more clarity you need, I'd like to ask Ms. Kidner to do that.
Thank you. Counselor? Okay, I'm gonna take a swing at a motion here that's that hopefully encompasses this. So I guess two parts, I don't know if we need to move or see to the of the of the report. But the the key part to this is to me that the that the idea committee work on term of reference and bring it back to council prior to or feedback prior to adoption at a committee the whole. At a committee the whole. Have a second, or? No? Counselor Stone, thank you. And while I'll speak briefly, I believe I did in my previous comments. But I think this is an important, an important step, the staff committee. And I acknowledge that there's so much work to do on this. We're unlikely to get all the way there through through this committee. And I look forward to seeing the the terms of reference come forward and we can identify appropriate actions, whether it's modifying those or augmenting those actions with with more actions from. with more actions from, from councils as a whole. So I would like this to happen in a, in a relatively short time period. And I know that that's a loaded and open-ended thing. But I'll leave it to staff to see when that comes back. But the expectation is that it's, that it's air quotes soon. Councillor Stoner, I think I saw your hand, but then your video disappeared. Are you, are you with us when I have council race? Maybe go ahead, Councillor Race, and we'll come back to Councillor Stoner, right? And I see there, Councillor French, and welcome.
Thank you. And I mean, I generally agree with that sentiment and the motion. My only question is, does it also deal with some of the undrip issues? And, and I don't want to debate it, but going back to my first comment, when do these things coming out of that workshop? Which are apparently are just sort of brainstorming points. When do we kind of fine tune those, fine tune those and, and see how we might implement them or not? So is that part of this process, is it intended to be included in this motion? And if not, is it a separate process, I guess, in a separate motion? So generally support the motion, I just only question whether it goes far enough to somehow set up a process to deal with these other things that are kind of in front of us and in the report.
That's a fair, a fair point. Miss Mende, do you? There is a motion in the, sorry. Sir, Councillor Stoner, I had you on the list, and you disappeared on us for a second. Would you like to chime in?
I would, but I didn't actually hear all of Councillor Race's comments or the question at hand. So I will make my comments, but apologies if I don't address your question, Councillor Race. I was just going to speak in favor of the motion on the floor and thank Ms. Kinnear for the work done to date. This is a, a complex issue to try and tease apart. And there are multi layers to it, especially as we're talking about the intersectionality of actioning undrip reconciliation, as well as the inclusion, diversity, equity and access component. So there's lots of pieces here. I want to reiterate Ms. Glenda's point of, of trying to tag on to the incrementalism part of this and appreciate staff's work to bring forward something that is tangible within scope and capacity at, at this point. And as well as allow us the, the freedom in this committee of the whole to have the conversation about what are the pieces of that broader political and community conversations that we know we need to have in order to advance? Some of the key things that I think were included in that July motion. So I think this puts us in the right direction. It gets us taking the steps. And I look forward to reviewing the terms of reference and having a further conversation around what a standing committee of council might look like.
Thank you, Councillor Stoner. Councillor French.
Thanks, Councillor Herford. And I'm speaking in favor of the motion, of course, without the benefit of having participated in the conversation because I was in a dentist's chair for a lot longer than expected this morning. And then after acknowledging that, this was a great report and I could see that excellent work was put into it, thoughtful work. And what I'm hearing in the motion to me is the logical next step. And I would hate for us to get too caught up in trying to take on too much too early in this process. And I recognize that we are making up for lost time and there is urgency. And then I wouldn't want us to get caught up in doing this too quickly and doing a poor job with it. So in speaking in favor of the motion, I just want to reemphasize that I think that this motion is an excellent next step for where we're at at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor French. I'll just speak briefly to Councillor Race's points. And my sort of takeaway from, from that is, is wanting an understanding of, you know, the reporting mechanism to council, when the updates would be and so on. And I think that that can be, I left the motion as, as general and agreeable as it could be, knowing that those conversations are coming. And I would expect them to, to happen at the next, the next time we see this, which is when the, the terms of reference come to committee the whole. But I'm happy to entertain an additional motion if someone wants to, you know, sharpen, make this more specific or, or otherwise. But I Councillor Race.
Yeah, I don't want to belabor this because I, I think we're all trying to get to the same place. And, and, and I can't recall the exact wording of your motion, but is it possible just to amend it slightly to include the implementation or the actioning of undrip? And the the notes from the, from the workshop that are attached to our report? And kind of include that in the process going forward? I just didn't hear it the first time you mentioned the motion.
Thank you. I was, I would entertain a amendment, but I do think that, that this committee is already taking what's in the staff report as the, as their starting point. So I don't know that may be more prescriptive. At this point, anyone else want to comment on, on that piece or any of the pieces? Councillor Pettengill, you look like, yeah, there you go.
Yeah, thank you. I was going to say my, my expectation was that this report we've seen, received is important context. And that we're going to have to dig into it. I would not expect us to do that by the, the time we discuss the terms of reference, that that would be part of the work afterwards. And so it was my assumption that, you know, we wouldn't yet be digging into this, all the specifics of this report. Again, I see it as important background. So I would be, I guess, happy with the, the motion as it currently stands with that understanding. For what it's worth, I, I see a lot of potential value when we have a terms of reference discussion, doing it in the context of a workshop. I think there could be a lot of value in that personally. It's not something that I want to sort of add to the motion as a, as a directive, but just food for thought. The other piece, and I mentioned it a little bit earlier, I, I think there's still to, as a councils, we make decisions, a lot of opportunity for us to learn. There are a lot of great conferences all the time. We have a conference budget and I, I don't know, maybe at this point it's just reaffirming personal commitments to take some of those opportunities in the interim. So, you know, we're further ahead when we have this discussion. And other than that, I am happy to support this motion and thank staff for the work so far.
Thank you. Mary Elliott.
Just quickly, I think this is such a good start. And, and I hope the discussion today is actually helpful to staff in terms of unburdening all the responsibility for doing this work. And I think that's why council has wanted to have this discussion is because the work is ours as well. And so, and in a very profound way. And, and so I am hoping that in knowing that it can unburden these terms of references from having to accomplish it all and see that there is a role for our community and council to play in accomplishing what came out of the July 20 resolution, as well as our ongoing work on, on undrip and, or the declaration and, and truth and reconciliation. So that is my hope. That was the intent of, of this conversation for me is, is that this all shouldn't be on the shoulders of our staff. Council feels a tremendous amount of responsibility for this work. And so to not see how we're involved in it is, is something that of course we're going to focus on and pay attention to. So I look forward to those terms of references coming forward. I look forward to staff even having suggestions about, yeah, this is a piece of work that we don't want to do. And we want to see the community involved in or council involved in. So I think this is the start of the conversation. And, and as the CEO has said several times, this is about incrementally making changes and making sure we have the time and the resources and the knowledge to do them. And so this is an important conversation in that process. So I'm happy to support this resolution. And this conversation is just only going to grow from here. So thank you to my colleagues and to staff for that.
Thank you, Mary Elliott. Councillor Race.
I'll be brief. I, I'm fine with the motion. I, I take the points raised by my colleagues and, and I think staff has heard the comments. And so if we have to have a further discussion on something that isn't included, then we can have it when the terms of reference come forward.
Thank you. And with that, I'll call the question. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, council. So I, I, I let us run long. It was an important, is an important subject. I want to make sure that we had room to, to flush it through. I do want to give us a little bit of a recess. So let's, let's come back at, at 10:00 after. I think it's all a chance to move, to move around. And, and give, and also give Councillor Anderson a little bit more time to join because I know he will be interested in there. He's a great resource for our next topic as well. So, so recess till, till 10:00 after everyone, et cetera. We'll see you when we're back. Thank you. Welcome back, everybody. I'm going to wait for a few more faces to appear on the screen once they, there we go. So welcome back to Committee the Whole, Tuesday, February 23rd, 2021. We are on item four two Squamish Marine zoning update. And we've got a couple of staff members with us. Is it, this McJanet's going to be leading? That's perfect.
You can't. Just a quick check in on, on my volume for my sound. Is it okay?
All systems are good there. And that sound, we've got picture.
Perfect. That's great. Well, hi, everybody. It's Sarah McJanet here. I'm with my co-pilot, Matt Gunn, from Community Planning. And our purpose today is to present and collect any further council input on a full complete draft of zoning amendment by law two, seven, seven, one, along with associated mapping that we're showing to council for a preview prior to any formal reading. And in the report package, staff have highlighted revisions to the bylaw and maps since it was initially presented back in October of 2020. So as you know, marine zoning is a substantive component to the much larger zoning bylaw overhaul that we initiated last year that has happened in stages. So I'm going to quickly summarize the purpose, scope for the new zones, our approach and engagement to date as a review, along with the recent revisions that we've made in response to inputs. Council has provided also senior government agencies and First Nations, as well as community. So just to highlight also that marine zoning is one of a number of key actions in the Squamish Marine Action Strategy that we completed back in 2018, 2019. And so marine zoning is really important because it does connect to all four of the marine focus areas in that strategy from greater shared governance and enhanced coordination of uses to ecosystem protection, improving community access and enjoyment, economic development and waterfront revitalization. So zoning is really an important first step for us to increase alignment and set an overall marine use framework. And so there's so many more additional tasks and actions in the marine strategy that are linked to use and zoning that still need to be addressed. For example, specific infrastructure and amenity needs for water access. And the needs are being closely considered and accounted for in the new zones. However, resolving access and infrastructure for specific sites does go beyond the zoning project. And it's being planned as a distinct piece of work. Also quickly, just highlighting that marine planning and zoning work definitely ties to regional priority action that we are undertaking in concert with other communities around a Katsum, How Sound, through the Ocean Watch Report. So this is an action area that focuses on leveraging legislative tools for advancing sustainable coastal development in our bio region. On the heels of the preceding presentation, I think it's also vital just to highlight how we are continuing to situate this work within unceded territories and homelands of indigenous peoples. And with a fundamental respect for indigenous sovereignty over their lands and resources. So through this work, we've been working hard to build awareness and share understandings about how a Katsum and how Sound has provided food and transportation and a spiritual and cultural landscape for Coast Salish through the, the knowledge that we have been learning about through different parts of this work. And also that this Squamish hold governing laws, traditions, customs and plans, such as their Kai Tamek Sacred Land Plan as four lands and waters in this area. So we are initial outreach happened very early in this project with Squamish Nation in late 2019. And this has been done to, to ensure that municipal marine zones are developed and not written in any way to infringe upon Aboriginal rights and title, nor use of lands and waters or engagement in traditional cultural and economic activities in marine areas. Particularly, so staff have provided periodic updates to the nation throughout our work. And we've also engaged through Squamish Nation's new referral system. We actually just had a recent meeting with their rights and title department and staff and are awaiting some additional comments. And so formal referral of this bylaw will also continue. This more broadly just highlights the progression of engagement work that we've done to date with specific activities and engagement methods as we've collected information, perspectives and insights. And so on the far right-hand side, you can see that we're, we're now engaged in this formal bylaw drafting and completion around that. And we're positioned now to initiate bylaw readings, subject to final inputs from council today. And again, this is an image you've seen before, just around the scope. So the zoning preview or review is really addressing marine waters that are currently zoned resource, as well as former industrial marine areas within the Mamquan Blind Channel, in the upper areas and Catamaroo Slough. And then also more broadly to the south, along the west side of How Sound and around Watts Point, south of Darryl Bay. The zoning does not include First Nations reserve lands or waters. And it also does not include any of the newly adopted comprehensive development zones for waterfront sites such as oceanfront waterfront landing or sea and sky, et cetera. And also we have not included in scope the major industrial I3 sites such as Squamish Terminal, Site B and Wood Fiber. Zooming along, the zoning review, it has focused on organizing and aligning zones with intended water uses and rectifying major misalignments that we have within our jurisdiction. And so we have stepped through a number of just tasks and technical review that have, that are shown here. And so this has really been a, a good exercise to work through. So there are five new proposed marine zones that are organized based on generalized categories of marine use, including marine general or navigation as M1, mixed use, M2, marine recreation, which is more of a civic marine zoning, M4 for marine log storage and a spot zone for marine transportation facility for Darryl Bay as marine or M5. We've also applied an existing P4 conservation zone to marine areas for ecological protection as outlined in the report. In addition to the zones, we have a set of marine definitions, as well as general regulations which apply to all marine uses and areas unless otherwise specified in the bylaw. So since October, we have made a number of revisions based on input. And these are included adjustments such as tweaking and better aligning marine use terms with some of our existing terminology and other bylaws, such as our floodplain management bylaw, and then also ensuring definitions are working across definitions within the bylaw. We've done some additional clarifications for allowable uses, such as navigation anchoring and whorage. And also added more clarity for marine calculations. and also added more clarity for marine calculations such as citing height setbacks and coverage. We removed private moorage facilities as a permitted use within the M one zone as discussed in October. And then we've made a bunch of edits to the M two zone that include slightly reducing on water building heights, expanding the board allowance and also editing some of the provisions around green fueling. We've also added marine transportation services to the M three zone. And we've done some additional alignment with federal requirements and approved work practices for log storage and marine water based log handling. An additional matter that the bylaw will need to address that was not included in the report to council for today is aquaculture use. So that's something, that's a use that's currently permitted in the resource zone within the District of Squamish. Aquaculture is defined currently as controlled cultivation, rearing and harvest shellfish and marine plants. And currently, we don't have any marine based aquaculture operations within the district. And with the bylaw, as it's written now, replacing resource zone with the M one, the M one zone doesn't currently prescribe aquaculture. And so at this point in time, we are recommending that rather than allowing aquaculture broadly within the new proposed M one zone that we do consider site specific aquaculture proposals with more of a sort of spot zoning and condition of use approach, which has been seen and done in some other communities. So happy to talk with council about this further in the discussion today. I just wanted to fly in some of that for them. We also have added in this final complete bylaw some additional P four zoned waters, including the Stewamas River Outlet at the estuary, which is a high high sensitivity area. It's part of the primary floodway overland flow for the Stewamas. And then in addition, we've added a five hectare site on the edge within the estuary owned by the Nature Trust of D.C. This is part of the estuary management plan area, part of the bridge, bridge pond in a secondary floodway. And at the request of the owner, we have applied a P four zone here. Very quickly, just wanted to highlight and pause just to speak about anchoring and mooring. Following in Victoria's footsteps, within our bylaw two seven seven one, we are proposing to prohibit long term anchoring or moorage outside of marinas or moorage facilities. And this is defined as anchoring or mooring for a continuous period exceeding forty eight hours or more than seventy two hours within a thirty day period. And this is whether or not the vessel is anchored or moored in more than one location during that thirty day period. This prohibition is a regulatory backstop to address unauthorized mooring and long term moorage within navigation channels and to proactively address the derelict vessel situation that we we continue to face. In October, council asked staff to look at an expanded duration for temporary moorage outside of marinas and moorage facilities for greater consideration for marine visitation and tourism for greater length of stay. Upon further review and sort of deep discussion and in light of all the considerable time and cost and coordination around enforcement efforts to manage risks from long term moorage outside of marinas and the derelict vessel situation that that we faced. Staff are recommending at this time that we continue to maintain the originally proposed timing around the on long term anchoring and moorage. The focus is really to ensure that there's adequate visitor moorage within designated marinas and moorage facilities. And that's, that's really been the focus for amendments. And we're also trying to avoid transfer of risk to other marine areas as well as private water lots. So happy to to speak to this further with council during the discussion. I'm going to turn it over to Matt, who's just going to speak to some of the additional mapping amendments that are included within bylaw two seven seven one.
Thank you, Sarah. It's with the bylaw amendment that is being proposed also includes a new Schedule A to the zoning map. And Schedule A is the series of maps.
We'll get you to hold there one second. Sorry.
Sorry, I just want to remind staff that I have a declared conflict on lots thirty eight, thirty nine, which I believe are referenced at least one of them on the top of page forty four in our agenda. So as you're going through these amendments, I just don't want to find myself in conflict on any decision making. So I'm wondering if we can hold off. I'm talking about those until such time in this conversation that I can recuse myself.
Thank you. Thank you for that. I'm not sure if that affects your your presentation in in a in any way or if you.
Which are lots thirty eight, thirty nine?
Pioneer Way. There's one that you're contemplating a rezone.
Which maybe is part of the overall zoning discussion.
But RS two to I eleven, and I live adjacent to that property.
Right. Okay, okay, okay. Okay, I will not address. I don't specifically in this presentation note that change. And so I believe the rest of the presentation that I have prepared is does not aggravate that.
Okay. And then just a a question to our corporate officer, then if Matt's not talking about it, I can be involved in the conversation. But if there's any motions or decisions out of this work, then I would recuse myself. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for that. Thirty, I conversation ranging that that far from the water. But thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Jim.
Thank you. Okay, so to Matt, so Schedule A is the the map that allocates the zones to all the parcels in our community. It's actually a set of maps with one overview and a series of insets that are at a higher resolution. And and the map series update that we're proposing includes changes to a number of municipal crown and a couple of private parcels. The intention here is that because the marine zoning update is quite significant in terms of mapping impacts, that this was an opportunity to include a number of changes that are considered non controversial zoning changes. And so I'll just briefly go over what the nature of those changes are. They include all the previously adopted zoning amendments. So so as we do amendments over time, they're separate bylaws. This is consolidating into one. It includes all of the new marine zones. Quite importantly, it improves the alignment of zoning boundaries with legal parcels. Our old mapping wasn't done to the using level of technology that we have now. So this is a much improved alignment with with legal parcel boundaries and includes updates to zoning along the Mamquan River. Some housekeeping amendments such as applying park zoning within updated provincial park boundaries, correction of some errors such as rezoning private parcels that were currently zoned for park use. And I have an example that I can show you in a second. And the application of ecological reserve zoning for environmentally sensitive areas and alignment of district and crown land zoning with the twenty forty O C P land use designations and policies. All these are outlined in the staff report, but I have a couple examples to to show. Are we able to go into the next slide?
There is dropped off.
Yes, Miss McJanet. So I don't know if you.
I do have it here, so I will, I will share my screen. Are you now seeing a screen of a few maps?
We, we did. It's gone.
It's gone.
Oh, no, no, sorry. We're good. I've got things I made, but we can see that. Yes, go ahead.
Okay, so these are a couple of examples of the type of changes that are included within the update to the mapping that we're bringing along with the marine zone. So in the top left corner, we have, then there are two of these. You can see on the left side is the current and on the right side is the proposed. On the left side in that top left corner, you can see there's actually a private parcel, four oh four three two Thunderbird Ridge, which is zoned P three right now. It's zoned for park, totally inappropriate. We're proposing, we're proposing to rezone that to RS one as the rest of the neighborhood is zoned. On the top right, you can see the buffer, it's undeveloped land intended to remain as buffer between the business park and Dentville. It's currently zoned RE. We're proposing to zone it again to P three parkland. On the bottom left, you can see the Stormas Chief Park. That park is currently zoned RE again, not the appropriate zoning for it. So we're proposing to zone that to P three to parkland. Bottom right, there's another example. We have a bunch of municipal owned land. The the parcels, small parcels outlined in red, those are lands that were dedicated to park in the crumpet subdivision. They're currently zoned RS one. So we're proposing to zone those to P three. So these are the nature of kind of correction of historical errors or tidying up some loose ends that that are appropriate to do and considered to be non controversial amendments. That was the end of what I was going to present, and it was going to go back to Sarah. Has Sarah been able to rejoin?
I'm getting a no on the Sarah rejoining at this point. Are you, are you able to take us to that or should we reset?
I will stumble my way through. I have not heard of it, but so questions, discussions, inputs and next step. The staff recommendation is that the District of Squamish direct staff to bring forward District of Squamish zoning by law two hundred twenty eleven amendment by law marine zones for first reading and consider subjects to council in consideration of subject to council input revision summarizes follows. So we're looking for some feedback from council that we could use to inform finalization of the bylaw to bring forward for first reading. And then next steps moving forward are bylaw public notification and ongoing stakeholder outreach. There is a mayor's drop in on the marine zoning plan for March third. The bylaw final edits, which will incorporate any final input from stakeholders as well as what's heard from council and then ongoing intergovernmental engagement. That I believe was the sum of Sarah's presentation. And I think at this point, she would have wanted to open up the floor to, you know, receive feedback from council on thoughts moving forward.
Okay, council. At the image down.
Okay, I'm stopping sharing.
Thank you. And my, my first question to staff is if we need to wait for Ms. McJanet or if we're going or if we should proceed with who we have on the line. And I see many very qualified people on the line. I'm just going to check with the room here.
No insult taken, but I definitely think I'm Sarah's.
Yeah, Merle.
Aside from the Pioneer Way discussion, if people had questions for Matt about the amendments, that could happen now and and give Sarah a chance to call in.
That's a great suggestion to that. So we'll go to the the sort of the housekeeping portion of this discussion. Does anyone have questions in that regard? Go ahead, Counselor Anderson.
Mr. Gunn, the plot adjacent to Indian Reserve nineteen, which is the Yakuwassum Cemetery. There is a forest industry road in the vicinity, and I just could not from my, the mapping I consulted, confirm the relative locations. But are you aware that there may be a road through that property? I suspect not, but not far away. And this was a road to access the Freeze Creek Drainage and was used up to early nineteen sixties. And it is in sketched in in the Sea Sky L R M P. So are you aware of any infrastructure at all in that new area adjacent IR nineteen that is proposed for rezoning?
And apologies. Are you talking about the parcel that is on the west side of the Stewamas, of the Squamish River?
That's correct.
Yeah, so not having delved into the historical road network there, the the change that's proposed for that area is is strictly to align. It's one of these ones where we had historical parcel fabric, the the lines of the boundaries that came from older surveys kind of compiled and was not necessarily as accurate as what we have now. We now get these regular updates that make our parcel fabric much more accurate. And so the zoning that was applied to that area, there was a an IR and then land around it was zoned. We don't zone the IRs. That's not our role. And so the our mapping of zoning and the shape of the IR did not match. There is the shape of the IR and then a blob that didn't look anything like the IR of land that was unzoned. And so that's inappropriate because it's adding zones to the IR that are inappropriate and leaving unzoned land that was adjacent to it. So all we're doing is we're taking the zones over there, but then making the boundaries match the IR boundaries. So it wasn't, wasn't a reflection of any intention to to change zoning on, you know, for example, the road network in the area from from my historical industrial uses. But it wasn't a goal to ensure that those boundaries were rationalized.
Thank you. The other complication is the river is changing in that vicinity as well. Thank you for your clarification.
And I think that is why those boundaries don't match.
Okay, we're just going to do a quick technical check here. We have a call in user which we're hoping could be Ms. McJanet.
Hello, Sarah McJanet on the line.
There we go.
So sorry, everybody.
That's, that's okay. Thank you. Thank you for being resourceful and finding a way to to attend. Mister, I would do my best to translate the look of relief on Mr. Gunn's face. Here, it's, I'll leave it to your imagination. So we were just discussing just to, did you, I'll just summarize where we're at. We were discussing the the mapping and the sort of the housekeeping portion of this. And I'll do my best to wrap up that discussion before we move on to the to the other piece. Did anyone else have any other comments or questions for Mr. Gunn around the mapping and the the housekeeping items? Okay, so moving, moving on to Ms. McJanet's questions. Okay. Go, go ahead, Counselor French, and then Counselor Race and Anderson.
Thank you, Chair. So in the presentation today, the word aquaculture really jumped out at me. I don't recall seeing that phrase. And if it's in any of the previous reports, I apologize. So has me wondering, has there been aquaculture industry interest in setting up in our area?
Thanks, Counselor French, for that question. Yeah, the the aquaculture piece definitely has not kind of come to the fore up until now and then further kind of review and some community conversation. It definitely came up. I'm not aware of any kind of recent interest or proposal, but certainly there are examples of aquaculture going on in other communities. We do, and for a long time, aquaculture has been a use that's been included within our resource zone. And so, yeah, I'm only aware of like land based aquaculture, kind of more like on the hatchery side within Squamish. But certainly, there's, there's interesting work that's happening around aquaculture, particularly around, for example, like marine plants and with kelp and things like that, that we've just started to learn more about. But it definitely needs to be looked at. And I'm, at this point in time, staff are not recommending that we necessarily just kind of put aquaculture as a standing kind of use in the M one zone based on the review that we've initiated in looking at what other coastal communities are doing. There's kind of a mix, but for the most part, you often see aquaculture processing and aquaculture as a defined use, often within a specific spot zone with conditions of use. And that is because there are a lot of very, you know, specific site considerations for for that type of use in a marine environment.
Okay, great. Thanks, Chair. Just a follow up. So. under our current reality, uh, if a company wanted to set up, say, a a pen style net system, um, fish farm, could, could that happen here under, under our current scenario?
Uh, for a confirmation, so through our, our local level uh, uh, zoning bylaw, aquaculture is currently a permitted use in the resource zone. Um, in terms of the, the regulation and licensing um, of aquaculture in B C, there's that, that the province and the federal agencies come into play there. So D F O is responsible for regulating and monitoring and licensing finfish and shellfish aquaculture operations. Um, and then Transport Canada plays a role in administering um, the review and authorization around the placement of any kind of like aquaculture containment or structures or works within navigable waters. And then um, the province um, Flynn Road is, is responsible for the, the crown land component and issuance of any land tenures for aquaculture. So typically, um, I think you would, you would see an application being made to those senior government agencies firstly. Um, but in terms of our local context and zoning bylaw, aquaculture is, is a permitted use. There are no, there's very little, um, there's no conditions of use. It's just named as a um, as a, as a use or it's defined as a use, but there's no other regulation around it locally.
Okay, and with the direction we're heading in, does any of that uh, local responsibility change?
Uh, what we, what staff um, are recommending at this point in time is to leave aquaculture, not to include aquaculture in the new M one zone. Uh, that's what we, that's sort of the initial, initial response around this issue. But it's something that we can uh, do a little bit more engagement, um, you know, and um, and review around. Uh, so definitely interested in, in council's, council's thoughts on this type of use and how, and the approach that we might uh, wish to take at this, at this stage uh, with the zoning um, amendment by law prior to first reading.
Excellent. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Uh, Counsel Race, followed by Counsel Anderson.
Thank you. Um, I'll just chime in on that point just for feedback. I'm not sure that there's any areas uh, within our boundaries that are suitable for aquaculture. I'm not an expert on it. Uh, but because of the silt from the river and, and some other constraints, um, you know, taking it out of our zones uh, might not be a huge loss to the industry at all. Um, but I'll leave staff to think about that. My question was with respect to the scope and I just, it wasn't clear to me from the mapping uh, that came with the report. But I just wanted to confirm um, that the rezone on these new zones uh, apply to all of the lands down the west side of the Mamquan Blind Channel, because the mapping I saw showed uh, the log sort on the west side of the channel still zoned, or the water off of it, still zoned with the I one and I three. And also, um, I'm not clear what the treatment is of the la, of the water off of the ocean front in the Blind Channel, because my recollection from that zoning process was that the C D zone did not extend out into the water. And I just wanted to confirm that this bylaw or the amendments um, would apply to those water lots.
Thank you, Counsel Race through the chair. So firstly, um, for, on the map sheet five uh, within the map series um, for the oceanfront peninsula um, in the Mamquan Blind Channel, we have, um, there is a um, a swath of I three zones or zoning that is for the water lot that are currently um, being used for uh, log, water based log handling and storage. Um, the upland uh, is where Garibaldi Forest Products and, and Skomish Forestry have the um, uh, the upland log sort. Uh, we have not adjusted um, that, that water based zoning to M four. And it, the reason we, we have not done that is because currently uh, those uh, lands and waters are within the oceanfront uh, subarea plan uh, as part of our official community plan. Uh, and the, the future, the future use that's highlighted in the oceanfront subarea plan is not for continued industrial use uh, of that upland and, and those water lots. So to bring in marine zoning that is not aligned um, uh, in, in this way, if, without um, adjusting the O C P can cause a bit of a conflict there. So for the time being, we have left um, that I three zoning um, in that part of the Mamquan Blind Channel. And then second question was around um, whether or not for the, the oceanfront comprehensive development zone, if some of the waters are included. And um, there is a um, a fee simple uh, water area that is included within the, the C D sixty nine zone uh, that goes sort of around uh, from the, the front of the peninsula um, and in the location where the um, the harbor air dock is currently proposed um, in front of the future oceanfront park and then also wrapping around the Catamaran Slough. Uh, so the, the water lot um, and the extent of C D sixty nine zoning does extend into the water. Hopefully that, that answers.
Thank you. Yeah, no, and I see now with that map, um, and the part I was thinking about was the Marina space, which is a water lot, which is caught by this. But, but with respect to the industrials owning the log sort, uh, because the O C P, my recollection, I think that area is uh, future residential. Uh, but is there a reason we would not rezone that log sort now to something like an M two, for example? Um, but the log sort itself would be a grandfathered use. But we all expect and the report talks about the transition out of industrial into uh, into a longer term use. So I just, I, I guess I just don't understand why we wouldn't rezone it now.
I think um, uh, through the chair, uh, some of the discussion uh, that's happened around though that use uh, was that we uh, we had contemplated um, the scenario uh, by, you know, if we were to rezone it to M two use. Um, those uplands also haven't had um, are not part of the C D sixty nine zoning and also um, uh, so that's a little bit different from uh, the rest of the, the oceanfront peninsula that has already been rezoned. So um, we were concerned about just sort of rezoning um, M two for the water lot um, without kind of contemplating uh, you know, part and parcel, what's happening for the uplands there and didn't want to sort of decouple the water from the um, uh, decouple the water lot from the upland sort that kind of still has that, that I five uh, log sort zoning. But definitely interested to hear, um, you know, if council has a different view on what, on what they'd like to see happen there.
Well, my view would be to consider rezoning it now, just because, as I say, my recollection of the O C P is that it's not industrial, the future use of that land in the O C P is uh, I think it's future residential or something like that. Uh, and so to have the zoning contemplate the future use as opposed to the existing use. Uh, but I'll leave staff to consider that. I have other questions, Chair, but I'll step aside and come back. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Race. Uh, Counsel Anderson.
Thank you. I'll start off um, Chair with a question on the Catamaran Slough and oceanfront zoning, more or less but in part where Counselor Race left off. I'm trying to reconcile, excuse me, the uh, P four zoning for Catamaran Slough with the marine light industry and various marine vessel handling and terminal facilities uses that are outlined or provided for in the land use plan, the subarea plan and zoning for the oceanfront, the C D sixty nine zone that's been referred to. And I'm just wanting to understand this better, uh, that we take into account uh, what may unfold here. And I think we should reflect how important this waterfront employment section of the oceanfront peninsula is for our overall marine strategy as we realize it. And so I'm wanting to be more comfortable with potential um, um, align or misalignment with the P, between the P four zoning and the zoning and subarea plan provisions for that southwest corner. Uh, the waterfront employment zone of the oceanfront peninsula, if staff may have, be able to elaborate on this.
Thanks so much, Counsel Anderson. I'm very happy to uh, to help provide a little bit more um, explanation and rationale on this front um, through the chair. Uh, basically, the P four zoning that we established and proposed through this marine zoning amendment uh, picks up and is uh, applied to three uh, crown aquatic crown water lots on the very um, western edge of the Catamaran Slough up against uh, the, the Third Avenue access to the terminals. And so um, uh, basically uh, in the sort of southern part of the Catamaran Slough, it does interface with um, a portion of the upland uh, within this, within the oceanfront zoning. Uh, as you uh, related Counsel Anderson, it's, there's a block uh, sea waterfront employment. Um, and so that's uh, that's for the upland. Um, although in the, in the C D sixty nine oceanfront zone, all of the foreshore water area is zoned um, currently like in the uh, it's zoned Catamaran Natural Marines. So um, the, the natural Catamaran Marine sub, subzone within the oceanfront zoning does align well with the P four. Um, uh, on the upland, however, uh, the, within the waterfront employment area, the types of uses that are permitted on the, on the upland as prescribed in the oceanfront zone are things like um, uh, marine oriented light industrial, uh, marine transportation infrastructure, including passenger ferry, marine service and repair, general repair and services, boat building and storage and those kinds of things. So that was what was set out um, in the C D sixty nine zone uh, back in the day. And certainly um, the, the P four zoning on the far western edge um, does not preclude any of those uh, marine employment uses per se. There are through kind of continued master planning that's happening for the oceanfront. Um, and in, in discussion with um, the development manager with um, Matthews West. Certainly, I know they're looking um, and addressing kind of different um, uh, basically realities and challenges in uh, in the Catamaran side um, that have, you know, that come into play with um, raising up um, to the F C L um, and first sea level rise and, you know, um, any kind of like dredging and stuff that would be required um, to help support any of those uses. So that's, these are things that are being looked at, but the, I guess to answer council's um, question, there, there's, the P four zoning is not precluding any of those uses and it's really applied to the far western edge right up against the road. And that's just reflecting um, the high sensitivity um, of uh, some of those um, or of that area and the drainage um, that's happening in there. As you go further up into the
Thank you, Ms. McJanet. That is helpful. Chair, I have a follow up question on another area, the upper Mamquan Blind Channel, if I may.
Yep, go ahead.
Yes, and now in the upper blind channel, we have a proposed dock, of course, as part of the Scott Crescent Development. And uh, in their land development agreement, we also have two gazetted former dock areas and ones which the upland property owners have their eye on for, for use in future, namely at three eight two two zero highway ninety nine, that's the hostel site. And at fifteen ninety five Scott Crescent, which is the Beckham residence. Now, both of these landowners point to these gazetted, and I'm not sure of their legal status. Uh, both have had uses and about ten years ago, an application for the Beckham site for a dock. And um, so the, there is also the O C P land use designation is Mamquan Blind Channel for the Beckham property is something to footnote. So my questions are really two. Uh, with respect to private mooring, how would each of these docks be considered, including the Scott Crescent Development Dock? And how do we categorize it in terms of the proposed zoning package on that feature? And otherwise, uh, it seems to me that that land tenure and a previous application might be taken into account uh, for the P four zoning as well as the O C P land use there for the Beckham property. So Beckham property and, or foreshore and uh, private mooring or the status of the docks proposed in the upper blind channel.
Thank you so much, Counsel Anderson. Um, and uh, yes, uh, just through the chair to speak to this. The um, uh, we have been doing more sleuthing uh, with uh, the province to, to look at. And as I mentioned, in terms of our technical review, it has included a lot of deep diving around tenures uh, and permissions that, that exist uh, within the municipal area. So we have actually just uh, confirmed and learned that there is, there has been a um, uh, specific permission um, for uh, that, um, for that property on the east side, so the Beckham property. And um, essentially with, with any kind of private mortgage permission granted by the province for private mortgage, essentially that would um, uh, that would preclude, or sorry, that would um, that uh, even though the, there's no uh, actual dock that has been built, the, the permission is there. Um, and so what we can do is basically uh, adjust that um, that zoning boundary line a little bit further north because um, uh, yeah, we can, we can adjust that uh, just to reflect that permission. We did in October have a conversation with council um, around the idea of a private mortgage facility. So we ended up defining that use. Um, but council um, uh, made a, provided input that we should actually uh, remove um, private mortgage facility from the M one zone. So currently in the draft bylaw, private mortgage facility is not included, but we have included community water access. So we'd have to look specifically at that permission in that specific instance um, as to, you know, um, you know, how that fits or does not fit within the overall zoning, but I do know that that, that permission does exist. So we'll, we'll be looking at that.
Thank you very much. Chair, I have another couple of questions, but I'm happy to wait for others if you wish.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, we'll move on down the list. I've got Counsel Stoner and followed by Counsel Race. Um, and um, and then Counsel Peddingill. I acknowledge that we, we ran uh, ran late on our previous topic and we were already on a short launch. I get, if we could keep the, the questions to as concise a question as, as we can. And the comments for um, the end would be uh, great. But um, we're gonna turn over. So Counselor Stoner, go ahead.
Thank you through the chair. Um, Ms. McJanet, I'm just curious about uh, the shift to the M one zoning and removing aquaculture as a use. Um, as I understand it, aquaculture in our zoning definition only allows for shellfish and seaweed farming, not finfish farming. That would be my first clarification.
I believe that's correct. Yes, based on the, the definition that I read out earlier.
Um, and then just uh, are we proposing that all of the marine gateway area basically south to Watts Point? Um, obviously we're not rezoning wood fiber. Um, everything else though is proposed to move to M one. Is that correct?
That is correct. Everything that's uh, not tied up in a provincial tenure for water, uh, for log storage. So um, uh, you can see um, in the map sheet six, uh, the M one zone kind of wraps around all the way south. Um, it doesn't, um, it does not include obviously those, those provincial uh, tenure areas for log storage and industrial at Watts. And then at Daryl Bay, the exception there is the M five for the ferry terminal.
Okay. Um, and then do we have other policies? So just recognizing that if we remove aquaculture as an allowable use in this zone, um, which I do actually think that there are potentially some viable tenure areas uh, in that south location, especially for something like seaweed cultivation, which we know um, is, is both uh, really can be very uh, useful for both uh, local food production as well as climate change mitigation adaptation. well as climate change mitigation adaptation. Does, do we have other policy that would support if somebody did want to come forward as a, for a spot rezoning that would facilitate that conversation? Or would it be kind of an uphill battle based on a lack of policy that would support that direction?
Thanks so much, Councilor Stoner, for this question. Thinking, turning back to the official community plan around aquaculture, I'd have to actually double check because I can't recall right now if we have any specific policy speaking to aquaculture. But I think from, with a climate lens around the opportunity for sequestration, but also, you know, just in terms of sustainable kind of development and, and opportunities around that type of use, I think it could be something that, you know, I don't see any major flags on the policy side. But I think it's, it's how and where that use would, you know, would be proposed that would be really important for consideration as to ensuring that, you know, its environmental impact is, is mitigated essentially.
Thank you. I had another question on another topic, just in terms of the M two zone. We've included visitor mortgage requirements of a minimum of one per twenty slips for long term mortgage. And this is my lack of ignorance in terms of how large our existing facilities are. But how many, like, do we have a sense of how many slips that would actually make available for visitors?
Yeah. Thank you for that question. So through this process, staff have basically created a Squamish Marine Mortgage Inventory, which is in progress. So we've been mapping out the mortgage spaces at all the existing marinas. And as an example, if we take the Squamish Yacht Club, for example, the last count from consultation with the yacht club, I think there were just over, there are about a hundred and nine total mortgage spaces. And currently, visitor mortgage there, there's about sixty feet of, of reciprocal mortgage, I believe, for kind of transient vessels with the prescribed visitor mortgage proposed of one, one visitor slip per twenty kind of long term slips. If we, that would be about six boat slips for that marina essentially. So six over a hundred and nine. That's what it, the calculation would result in. And so we are looking for, you know, additional comment around this. Mortgage, visitor mortgage is very seasonal in nature also. So higher demand, obviously, in the, in the summer and shoulder seasons. And often, you know, marinas do kind of offer visitor mortgage in the summer. And then, you know, during the winter, they might reassign those, those boat slips to locals or more, for more permanent mortgage. The, the parking or the visitor mortgage piece, we just kind of landed on that as, as being sort of a, like what seemed like a reasonable amount to, as a minimum, but definitely looking for more feedback.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Race.
Thank you. And my question is with respect to the height of the float homes. And you've reduced it to what is approximately twenty feet, six meters, I think. And I know in the report, there's a diagram of kind of a, a round sloping roof that might come in there. But my concern is that a lot of float homes like to have peaked roofs. And the issue is actually, apart from somehow, sometimes that's easier to waterproof. The other issue with these is snow load. And I know in the lower mainland, there's been all kinds of cases of boathouses, not float homes, but boathouses, which have actually sank because their roofs were not sloped enough and the pressure, the, the snow or the weight of the snow just collapsed the boathouse on top of the boat underneath. Same thing can happen to a float home. And they can get top heavy. There was one actually tipped over in front of the bay shore a few years ago from the snow load. So I think we might want to give some consideration to snow shedding ability with those. And, and my thought was that if it was going to be a peaked roof, that there'd be some consideration of how high the peak might be because every take twenty feet, I think, is two floors. And I think we'd want to allow them to have two living floors and then some, some ability to have a peaked roof above it. But I take the point that it's the, the intent is to reduce, as these things come up in a high tide, reduce the blocking of views and so forth. But, but I'll leave it to staff unless staff has a comment on it about, you know, adding the ability to have a peak above that.
Thank you, Counselor Race. Yeah, just a couple clarifying comments in response. The, for confirmation, the, the M two zone does not allow for float homes. So float homes are a very distinct use that are only permitted within that CD eighty-seven zone for the Suraco project. This marine zoning does not change the prescribed and permitted maximum height for float homes in that CD zone. So in the M two zone, we, we have prescribed a height for floating structures. So that could be a structure floating on a dock or on a, on a fixed pier. And based on, on the swing, swing height and the tide from low, low water to high water, we ended up adjusting and slightly reducing the initial maximum height down to six meters, which is, is more than enough for, you know, you know, a structure that's on the water or on a fixed pier. And so we felt like that was, that was a reasonable height maximum to, you know, preserve that, that kind of human scale of at high, high water or high tide in proximity to the waterfront walkway. The, the peaked roof piece, I think, you know, the zoning bylaw is not speaking to the type or prescribing the, the type of roof on these structures. And I think that in terms of snow loads and building construction standards, and that's something that, that comes into play for building permit. And obviously, with the, you know, the ballast and things, there's, you know, very, that has to be engineered very, very carefully because of this is a floating structure. So the zoning doesn't really, doesn't really deal with the roof form in this way. Just the maximum height.
No, but if I might share, but, but my concern is not with so much with a building that might be in a fixed pier. It doesn't have that issue. But anything that floats, whether it's a float home or some other floating structure, the difficulty, if you just say it's a maximum of twenty feet, if you tried to put a peak within that, you're going to use a lot of, lose a lot of usable space or potentially could. So it was just a matter of considering that for the, for the ones that are floating, they will need snow shedding ability without, hopefully, without the loss of too much usable space on the second floor. And I'll stop there. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Villaniscus has joined us.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify that the zoning bylaw does calculate height for peaked roofs a little differently than for flat roofs. So the more peaked the roof is, it essentially calculates an average point between the ceiling and the top of the roof. So those, the structures with peaked roofs essentially are able to go a little higher than a structure with a flat roof.
Thank you. Move on to Counselor Peddingill.
Yeah, thank you. A few questions. In the M five zone, I'm wondering why we, at this point, are zoning for a building, a ferry terminal specifically, and, and, and why sort of the, the dimensions we've decided. And what I'm thinking is, you know, if, I understand there are some ministry directives around the most southern tip of that, but it doesn't apply to the whole site necessarily. And I think, you know, if we had a zero emissions operator wanting to do a community, fast commuter ferry to Vancouver, we might be very accommodating, might make sense to be very accommodating in terms of building size and so on. But if, if, you know, we're talking about something to facilitate a massive fossil fuel plant, I don't know if we want to invest in a really tall, large building on that site or enable that necessarily. So just wondering what our thought process is beside zoning for a building now as opposed to dealing with the, the building piece later as part of a rezoning?
Thanks for the question, Counselor Peddingill, through the chair. The, the permitted buildings and structures outlined in the M five Daryl Bay Ferry Terminal Spot Zone were simply to consider if, in future, if there was any kind of a, a building for the principal uses in that zone. So the principal uses being ferry terminal, marine, we've added marine transportation services for any kind of additional kind of transportation service use there. And then beyond that, it's the only other use, structures and uses are docks, floats, piers, pilings and dolphins. And so we just considered the future potential for any kind of a building to help support, like to enclose the ferry terminal use. Or it might be like, you know, a washroom building. It could be, you know, some administration or office space as well. So we are just trying to consider kind of that future, future potential and building that in from the outset.
Okay, thank you. And just make, well, I'll save my comments for later. The other piece, looking at the marine fueling, I was happy to see the requirement for shore power and electric fueling. But when I look at our community climate action plan, nine years, forty-five percent reduction in emissions, trying to, you know, I presume we want to see a major increase in boat traffic, that, that would be a win in, in all of this. But looking at that climate policy, I assume we can't afford for that to be fossil fuel powered boating. And I recall when we talked about this previously, we sort of presumed that a lot of the growth would be sailing vessels. And looking, it seems that in general, boats and smaller pleasure craft and so on is growing in terms of electrification just as fast as cars are. So I'm wondering why, rather than just requiring some electric refueling, we didn't limit the density of fossil fueling or, and really try to articulate our goal and our vision for, you know, nine years from now, which is coming pretty quickly.
Through the chair, in response for the, what we've done with the definition of marine fuel sales, just for clarity here, is that we define marine fuel sales as a marine service use in which fuel for boats is sold and, and must include both gasoline and alternative fuel service for hybrid or electric vessel propulsion systems. So it's that, that requirement that both of those types of fueling have to be provided. We didn't go beyond that to sort of assign a minimum, I guess, like a minimum amount or any kind of further kind of quantification there, just beyond saying, you know, you basically, marine fueling is permitted subject to provision of, of, of both types of fueling or accommodating both types of fueling. So at this stage, yeah, we, we took a similar approach to what we've done for land based fueling stations within the municipality.
I guess my question is, though, can we hit the targets in our climate action plan with that approach? Do we believe we can hit those targets?
I, yeah, that is a question I'm not sure that I can answer, sort of in, in relation to the marine zoning per se.
Okay, I'll leave my questions there for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor, we're going to go to Mayor Elliott, followed by Counselor French. And I have a few questions. And we've, although we started later, I'd like to keep this on, on time. And we've already run slightly past that. So we're trying to, we're trying to work towards a conclusion here if we can, please. Mayor Elliott, go ahead.
Ms. McJenner, is there an enforcement reason why we make this distinction of people mooring outside a marina where you get forty-eight hours in one spot, but then you have seventy-two hours total if you move around in a thirty day period? Like what, help me understand the logic of that because I still don't get it. So I wonder if there's an enforcement angle that I'm missing.
Thank you for the question, Mayor Elliott. Through the chair, the, the way that we've structured that provision very closely follows how other communities have sort of addressed mortgage, anchoring and mortgage within their bylaws. And so we've kind of modeled it after that. I think essentially it's that usually you would see sort of like a continuous period and the way that it's set up and written is that it's, it's a limitation around, or it defines temporary mortgage as anything or permanent mortgage as anything exceeding a certain number of hours in a continuous period or a certain amount of time within that thirty day, recognizing that the nature of navigation is that it's kind of, people are, are, you know, kind of moving around or that. And so it's kind of a backstop to say, you know, there's a limit around how much, how long you can kind of anchor and moor as kind of an ancillary part of, of navigation activity within one area. And then, you know, if you were to kind of move around, it's not the, necessarily the, like the clock starts all over again. It's, it does provide that backstop for kind of a, a total amount of time in a thirty day period. So those two pieces, my understanding is that it's important to have both from a enforcement and management perspective. And that's very typical of, of how you would see it in other bylaws.
Yeah. Okay. Chair, I know you're trying to move us along. So can I just add some comments here rather than coming back around?
Absolutely. Go for it.
So I think the, one of the things when we contemplate building a sailing center on the oceanfront and that we, I, I still think we could have more visitor slips in our marinas. I think about our water tourism economy that we haven't really been able to exploit because we haven't had those connections to the waterfront that, that I think this marine strategy and our marine zoning will help us do. So the one, I, I just wonder if we can just make it a seventy-two hour period. So if someone comes up for a future sailing race and they want to be in their boat, but there's not enough visitor spots in the marina, could they be here for a long weekend and not worry about that? Plus, what are our policing resources to even enforce a forty-eight hour or, or seventy-two? So I just, I, I still wonder about aligning those two things. I have the same concerns that Counselor Anderson raised about the Block C waterfront employment area in the CD sixty-nine zone. The last council, we had a lot of conversations about boat lifts and, and marine employment. And so if, if we put P four there, and you kept saying the western side, but the western side of the Cattermore Slough is, is connected to the terminals, and the eastern side is connected to the oceanfront. If we make that P four, it just seems like an upward challenge if someone wants to put a boat repair in there. So I'm not sure why we wouldn't align that M two zoning adjacent to Block C and then use P four in areas outside of that. So I'm just worried that we're going to create a difficulty in, in seeing that part of our employment lands thrive. And if it can't fit in the Cattermore Slough in the way that we envisioned it through the phase development agreement, it should fit somewhere. And so we need to figure that out as part of a longer, larger conversation about the oceanfront. The piece around aquaculture, since it didn't include pens in fish farms in the RE zone, I'm curious why we wouldn't just translate that over, that definition into the M one zone rather than creating an additional set of hoops. So I'm still not convinced that that is the right way to go. And the whole thing around parking, I think we need to expand our thinking in that if we put in a motorized boat launch somewhere, there's not going to be any amount of parking close to that boat launch, which I think will meet the demand that will be there. So I think we should not, we should think beyond the four hundred meters and include some language around, you can have offsite parking that's connected by a shuttle bus or, or that sort of thing. Like when we think about access for any of the sports we do here, whether it's mountain biking, rock climbing or, or water based sports, parking is going to become an issue for all of them and trailhead management or, or boat access will become. So, so maybe actually we just need a centralized parking lot and then a really awesome tourism shuttle that moves around town and moves people to their trailhead of choice or their boat launch of choice once they park their trailer. And so I'd actually like to see our language around the parking requirements be a little more flexible to And so I'd actually like to see our language around the parking requirements be a little more flexible to acknowledge that sort of valet or or more distant parking, because I can't see with our land costs how we're going to fit a big parking lot near our waterfront like that. I just don't think it's in the realm of possibilities right now. So I would like to see that explored a little more before it comes back for readings. But other than that, I'm, I think this is a great piece of work and is so important in starting to see our marine strategy come to life. So thank you for the work on that.
Thank you.
Okay, Council French.
Thank you. I think this is just one question, and I think the answer is brief. I know that the wind sports enthusiasts will be very interested in this conversation. So I'm hoping staff can give a quick analysis of what impacts this update is going to have on the future of wind sports.
Oh, thank you for that question.
Can I, can I just jump in with Ms. McJanet?
Go ahead, Mayor Elliott.
Our staff are still learning about this recent project that was announced by the Squamish River Watershed Society, and I would hope that council will await a briefing from staff rather than having Ms. McJanet jump in on like the future of wind sports, but perhaps she can speak more specifically to where it's allowed in the current zoning we're talking about, rather than the future of wind sports, maybe just the recreation portion of that. So Council French, our staff are just getting the details of this report. So I don't think it's fair to put Ms. McJanet on the spot to talk about the future of wind sports. So Ms. McJanet, if you can limit your comments on that front.
Well, I'm certainly certainly thinking in within the context of this conversation.
Just I'll give it my best shot, just in terms of wind sports interest within and the conversations that we've hosted with wind sports through marine zoning. Definitely, the interest is just around kind of the the shared use of of marine waters. And so there's been a lot of interest in understanding kind of where the marine navigation areas are, the M one zone, and clarification around what we mean by marine navigation. And so we've defined navigation. It doesn't matter if you're in a vessel or you're on a on a kiteboard, you are navigating in or on or through the water. So there's definitely that, you know, that's been a key part to clarify. And I think, you know, the the ongoing conversation is just around access. And then what's, you know, what's happening where? So I'll just leave it at that. But just to say that we have been engaging with wind sports directly through our focus groups, through our kind of marine recreation focus groups, and then more broadly, just through the survey, we had a really high participation of wind sport users in our public survey as well that self identified. So they're very, very engaged in in the discussion around marine zoning.
Thanks, Chair.
Thank you. I guess I'll jump in here. The, I have some concerns around the Catamaran Mall P zone, and maybe those will be addressed through my deeper look at at the mapping or just understanding in the context of the of the the CD sixty nine zone, how that how that interfaces. And I have and I understand, and this council hasn't seen much to do with that CD ninety, CD, sorry, it's a CD sixty nine zone. So I'm hoping that'll be clarified at that point, which would be prior to, I imagine would be prior to to reading. So maybe there's just some clarification and some understanding to be built there. And I feel like I'm not the only one that has concerns around that. I've heard that throughout the day. I am supportive of the the sort of the rethink on the on the parking that the mayor, the mayor brought up. I want to make sure that we set accomplishable goals if if we're going to have somehow find a way to gain access for boat launching facility of some of some sort from a water access standpoint. I don't want to be make it only theoretical because the parking need would never be never be satisfied. So there will be some creative solutions needed to to get there. But that was part of did did the parking required to jump out at me as I read through the the report. I think I'll leave it. I think I'm, I think I'm okay to leave it to leave it there, actually. Thank you for the work on this. It's a very complex issue with particularly in the way it relates to the other, all the lever, all the oversight and various regulatory bodies that sort of all interface here as our town interfaces with the the waterfront. Council Peddingill, go ahead.
Yeah, I just, are we at comments now? I didn't want to miss my opportunity for a couple of comments.
To comments here, it says, sorry, the motion we had was that for this to be brought forward for for readings. And with a little bit with council input and revision summarized as follows, and that part is is blank. I think we're getting to to that point so we can move it with the with the input and and revisions as as seen. I would like to have the sort of the highlights of those revisions or comments maybe captured by by staff. So it's in one in one spot. If we can, if we can get there, so far, I've I've heard the the parking deep dive, the or deeper dive, the new flushing out of that, the Catamaran P zone and how that relates to the CD sixty nine, sixty nine zone. Yeah, I don't know if it's other to other to other pieces. And I don't know if staff, before we, before we make the move the the recommendation, I'd like staff to chime in with the with sort of the the bullet points of what they've heard to make sure that we're all very clear.
And Chair, if I might, I just haven't had a chance to summarize my comments if that's.
Go ahead. This is this, this is that. Go ahead.
Okay, all right. Thank you. So I think I align with most of what my colleagues have said so far. I am not as immediately concerned about the P four zone, but there are some things that I would like to hear a little bit more about. So I think in terms of learning a bit more, I'm on side with my colleagues there. I hadn't thought about the aquaculture piece, and that does raise some anxiety for me. I am far from an expert in this. And and so I guess my comfort level based on what staff has said would be to actually remove it from our current zones even just until we have a better sense of what what makes the most sense for our community. Now, maybe there's something obvious that I just don't understand in that why that doesn't make sense. But that's where I I sit right now. I would like a a little bit more comfort from our staff in terms of what fits our community. The I I do think, you know, when I look at our CCAP, I don't see how we hit what that says with a significant increase in fossil boat traffic. So I would like to see something in there that really prioritizes non fossil boat craft. I think that's the growth we want. And so something should prioritize that, whether it's density of of those stations, or I'm not sure, but something along those lines. And then I think, you know, again, for me, pre zoning a building at Daryl Bay is a concern. And it's not just about wood fiber. That is a location that's in proximity to three major provincial attractions and the ocean. And I think what happens there is really important for our community for many reasons. And I think withholding some of that zoning until we understand what really makes sense there. I know there's some provincial direction there, but I think there's some other pieces there where I would like our community to have as much leverage as possible for whatever direction and or benefit, community benefit we see there. And so I would hold off on that piece of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Peddingill. Anyone else like to make further comments prior to the motion? Go ahead, Council Anderson.
I'd like to first start with a general one that we have a very dense package here. And a very important one that's featured in not only in numerous ways in our OCP, but in our strategic plan. And I think collectively, we're not giving it enough time, including for this afternoon's discussion. And I'd just like us all of us, the whole business, that we be mindful of this. I've got a list of things. I'll start out with in the report to council, I believe when we're discussing marine strategy and marine related zoning, we should be careful to cite all of the OCP policy content relevant. And there are two pieces that are missing and not for the first time. And that is port facilities and marine activities, section fourteen six and marine rail and air transport. These are hidden in different pockets of the OCP, but they're important prompts and important context. So that's fourteen point six and twenty point twenty four. They should be listed in that very important section of policy implications in the report to council. Secondly, with respect to the strategic plan and planet and environment, we discuss carbon sequestration. But both in the OCP and in our community climate action plan, we have reference to marine transport as carbon emissions reduction opportunities. And these are important and important elsewhere, I can assure you, in marine planning, the opportunity to move trucks off the road. So moving on also to economy and local jobs, I do not feel, although I'll quote, it says, supporting core sectors in forestry and wood products. I don't see any content here supporting core sectors of forestry and wood products, not at this time. Maybe it'll come, but there's nothing in this document that doesn't in fact offer more constraints and uncertainty. And it's just a general statement, extraregional stakeholders, as far as economy and local jobs, is not only local jobs. Our waterfront involves people living way up in the hinterland, including First Nations. Moving on, in the upper Mamco blind channel, I think it needs to be explicit that the ecological restoration and status of that area, and this is why I'm opposed to P four zoning at this time, needs to consider freshwater flow. This again is in the OCP. Section ten point ten J is quite explicit about the future, and it's a district initiative. It's not an initiative initiative, Local Environmental Group. It's a district initiative for many years to introduce water there, and it's extremely important. Over my lifetime, I've seen many changes in that waterway and things to plan for and things to plan again for. And that includes a dock across the road from the Adventure Center. I think we should keep that prospect open according to all kinds of considerations, of course. But I do think that that's a very important thing to consider in the long term. And we don't know how the engineering is going to work for that freshwater flow that we all are in favor of, according to our OCP. That's the upper blind channel. Next is forest industry. Right now, the forest industry is going through turmoil for three reasons. Well, B C timber sales is in the middle of planning, and they are planning log dumps in the middle of a zone, not proposed zone, not allowing that on West Townstown between the Squamish River and Wood Fiber. There's two sites there. And I think we should just make sure, sometimes when they're in planning, they keep, don't catch up to referrals, and there's changeovers and offices in Chillicothe that need to be alerted and so on. Generally, forest industry engagement has me concerned. And it's not our fault. It's also what's going on there. Their contract management, management contract changes underway, very big ones, and also ownership changes. So we need to re identify who the stakeholders are. This affects log storage. This affects Site B. It affects Galbraith Log Short relocation. And I applaud staff for the cautionary approach they're taking. That log sort on Galbraith Avenue may be still with us fifteen, twenty years from now. We don't know. And it may be necessary for the industry fifteen to twenty years from now. We just don't know. Finally, I think that I would like to see a clearer picture of where we're going with the rest of the Marine Action Strategy Implementation. I do understand Ms. McJanet's comments, and I support them, that zoning is important for establishing alignment and for setting a framework. But we have a lot of needs assessment that is still has a lot of puzzles to solve. And I think it's very important that we that we keep this in mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Anderson. Council Stoner and Council French, and then we're going to the motion here.
Yeah, very briefly, I'm generally supportive of this moving to first reading. Granted, there's no motion on the table, but I would like to see inclusion of aquaculture as it's defined in our zoning bylaw for shellfish and seaweeds included in the M one zone. I think that that just helps reduce the barrier for anybody who would want to come forward. And also very supportive of increasing flexibility of the parking regulations as they are currently proposed, recognizing that there's limited waterfront availability, and I don't want to necessarily use that all up with large scale parking lots. Thanks.
Good, you guys are started. Council French, I think.
Yeah, thank you. And so three brief points and acknowledgement of staff's work on this complex file. It's some excellent output has taken place. So thank you, Steph. The conversation we've heard around parking, I share that concern, and I think more work needs to be done on that parking situation. And I think Council Stoner has been super eloquent on the aquaculture situation. Shellfish seaweed, I definitely support that. Pen net fish farming makes me nervous. And Council Anderson's point about consultation with the forest industry, share I share that concern. Thank you.
Thank you. So Ms. Ms. McJanet, I suppose, or Mr. Gunn, I don't know who wants to attempt to summarize these as we come, as we're trying to put together the last bits of this motion here. You want to?
Sarah McJanet here, I can take a stab at the summary just to capture the points for council input to include within the council motion. Is that right, Council Herford?
Yes, please. Thank you.
Okay. So maybe we'll just highlight at the first point that there is let me just go back to the resolution here. Consideration of adding or including aquaculture in the M one zone. Increasing flexibility for parking to ensure that there's to to basically acknowledge that more distant parking may be supported and managed through sort of other access, a centralized parking and shuttle type of the scenario. Sorry, that's not very articulate. To bring back more clarity around and revisit the P four zoning in the Catamaran Slough in relation to the marine employment and Catamaran zoning within the oceanfront. Comprehensive development zone. Also addressing the building and structure provisions within the M five zone for Daryl Bay. And then also to address private mortgage facilities in the upper Mamclam blind channel.
Okay. Does that conclude your your list, Ms. McJanet?
Yes, that's what I've I've sort of noted as kind of.
I see Mr. Gunn.
The highlighted.
You have a point to add, Mr. Gunn?
Sarah, would you, I've been taking some notes. Do you want me to add a couple items?
Here, go for it.
I think one of them was a desire to try and increase the the visitor slips and think about how the kind of marine tourism economy can benefit from from both visitor slips and the the longer the seventy two hour stays in marine. And then there was another one, the forestry consultation, a desire to look at to ensure that we've had good contact, good engagement with the forest industry. And then there were some some desires to ensure that future RTCs capture all of the relevant. There's a few additional policies that have been noted related to to transportation and and so we capture those. Yeah, those are the other key ones. It seems that they got some very, they're. Yeah, those are the other key ones. It seems that they got some, they're, they're, could address.
Thank you. Um, so with those points, um, my intention was that we uh, include the points where there's consensus. Um, nothing there really jumped out at me as, as being um, not that we did an official poll. We'll make that part of this, of this motion if you want to exclude anything from that uh, from that list. I think that um, in my opinion, does a good job of summarizing. Um, Mary Elliot?
Just wanted to clarify the part about this forty-eight versus seventy-two hours. I just want to make sure we look at that from an enforcement perspective as well. Um, and, and the tourism economy kind of perspective. So that we're not, we're setting ourselves up for success rather than uh, than not. And also, I, I don't really understand the concern about the M five structure uh, for Darryl Bay. Um, so that's not something I share, but I'm, I'm happy for staff to, to look at. But it's, it's not, it's not something that jumped out at me.
Hey, counsel, um, is someone ready to move the, the motion with the, the feedback? Uh, go ahead.
Just, one of, I had mentioned um, a desire to prioritize somehow um, non-fossil fueling as a relative to, as opposed to just both are required. And I don't know if there was support for that or not. I'm hoping there is, but um, I didn't hear that mentioned.
Uh, Mary Elliot.
My thoughts on that are is that a definition doesn't really drive change. The market will drive change, and I think as long as we're um, accommodating for all forms of fueling, that the, the market will decide which fuel, fuel they want to use. So it's, it's not, I, I don't think this is the place to affect that change. I think it's at a, at a much higher level, not in the definition of marine zone.
I tend to agree. I, I think that the um, you know, our policy should be going through the community climate action plan sort of lens and, and want to make sure that marine uh, refueling is, is readily available. So there's unnecessary trips just to refill or some other silly side effect we're not, that we're not considering. So maybe staff could um, highlight those, uh, how the community climate action plan plays into um, the zoning as a, as a whole might be an appropriate um, piece. But um, yeah, I don't, I don't think that's necessary to call it out specifically uh, at this point. Okay, counsel, we have our, we have our list, we have motion, uh, we have a recommendation for us. Would someone like to move it with the uh, the items moved by um, Counsel Stoner, second by Counsel Race? I believe we've, uh, we will speak to it briefly. We've run way over. Um, so go, go ahead. Uh, Counsel Stoner, is your motion? Would you like to speak to it real, Counsel Race, comments?
Very briefly, I won't repeat the comments I've made. I just point out one or two things, all that, that mortgage, the way we're talking about it is, is anchoring as opposed to tying up to a dock. Uh, and the two have quite different considerations. And so I do support what is presently in front of us, because I think that's intended to apply to anchoring. And I do support the comments uh, made about the catamol. We did talk lot last term about things like travel lifts and so forth. And, and so that kind of uh, activity can very often involve use of the adjacent water, uh, which could be an issue with the present proposed zoning. Uh, but generally very supportive of this uh, um, and the provisions that we have and, and the comments. Um, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else have uh, comments at this point? Counsel Anderson?
Uh, I will be supporting the, the staff recommendation with great reluctance. And this is not a reflection on staff, but on a reflection on the scale of the topic before us and the challenges we have. I think it means that we as counselors have to help reaching out to make sure that stakeholders get involved in the time there is remaining to get their information, have their dialogue with our staff. It's very important. I'm especially concerned about two things, the provisions of the P four zone, perhaps in both areas uh, at the top end and at the catamol end that it is proposed to be applied to. And the spatial scope that excludes site B, when we have a several policy, longstanding policy out, uh, identifying site B for water dependent uses, that we do not entertain addressing that in our zoning. I think is a very serious concern of mine. Perhaps here of the opportunity in future discussions regarding the M, the master marine strategy implementation to address this. And maybe to come back to that question, that's a very serious concern, that we have some staff or some district documents um, suggesting it could be used for non-water dependent uses. It's just a very serious marine strategy concern. I'll leave it at that and hope that we can all muster um, engagement, help staff to, to do the engagement we can in the next little while. And a credit to staff for the work done, and it's been a mountain of work. Thank you.
Good. See, no further comments. All called questions. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, counsel, and I apologize for the uh, the massive overrun of time we've, we've had here. And to that end, uh, before I um, entertain a motion to terminate, I'm going to remind you to stay on uh, the call as we'll need to uh, open the special um, prior to taking a break of some sort, which I'll leave to the mayor to uh, figure out what's, what's best from here. Uh, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to terminate. Counsel Stoner, uh, and second by Counsel French. Any opposed? Motion carries. This point, I'll pass over, pass uh, fair over to Mayor Elliott to, I'm assuming, open the special.
Yep, open the special business meeting for the District of Squamish for Tuesday, February twenty-third. Um, acknowledging that we're meeting on the traditional territory of the Squamish Nation. Um, motion to adopt the agenda by Counsel French, second by Counselor Stoner. Um, and uh, we will recess this meeting until uh, two thirty. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.